Order at six oh seven. I'd like to welcome everybody that who is joining us today. We assume for our Daily City Library Board Meeting. We're now called to order at six oh five. We'll pledge allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call.
All right, Acting President Falco.
Here.
Trustee Santos.
Present.
Trustee Dow.
Present.
Okay. Like the approval for agenda. You will motion it.
Motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Presentation on introduction of cultivating race equity and inclusion initiative team.
I sent an updated agenda, I'm sorry, with the the approval of the minutes from the April twentieth meeting.
I don't know if that's the version that you're looking at.
So a segment.
Hmm.
I think she wants you to, we have to have a discussion.
You know, I do apologize. I really thought that Madam President will be here for her last meeting. And I'm trying to. Okay. Let me see.
Oh, maybe not, sorry.
Was I supposed to read it from there, Sheila?
Oh, just before the presentations, the approval of the minutes from the April twentieth meeting.
Okay. No, I didn't get that.
I had sent out a later version. I apologize.
Okay. Is there any way that we can hold on to that and move it while I find it?
Are you resending, Sheila?
Yeah, I'm just sending, I'm gonna go ahead and send the link. I've emailed it if that works, please. Are you sending it to me?
I sent you a link to the, to the posted one, yeah. The email.
Okay. So introduction of the. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting of April twentieth twenty one. Is that what we were supposed to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
You asking for a motion, right, Teresa? Cause I'm motion.
And I, I second.
Members of the board. Trustee Lauren and Christine.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Do, do you guys hear me? Am I talking to myself?
Oh, I think.
Hello.
Yeah. Can you hear us, Teresa? You hear it?
Do you guys hear me?
We hear, we hear you. Yeah, can you hear us?
Can I say this again?
And can you hear us, Teresa?
I would like to approve the regular meeting agenda of April twenty 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 one.
And motion. To approve.
And I second.
Okay. Do you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Okay, wait, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we heard. Can you hear us? I think we didn't hear us.
I hate this. Okay, so let me say it for the third time. I do apologize. Like to make the motion or like to approve the regular meeting agenda of the minutes from April twenty 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 one.
And motion, if you hear me, Teresa. Okay, great.
I second.
Thank you, ladies. Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. Presentation introduction of cul- cul- cultivating race equity and inclusion initiative team.
So I am very excited to be able to introduce. We're calling it the CREE Team. Spanish for, I believe, right? So this, this is a team that was initiated by some of our amazing staff. So we have two of the three members here tonight. So we have Selena Torrelli, which you will know Selena from her bilingual techo ex free time, as well as her fabulous smiling face at the Westlake Library. And then, of course, you all know Sarah Spence, our U.S. librarian. And there's a third member, Allison Green, who is a library assistant at the Ceremony Main Library, who works in the circulation division. And they are our team, but they're, they're leading this initiative, but it's something that encompasses all the staff. And Selena's gonna show, uh, share with you a short presentation to kind of explain what it is, but I just really wanted to give them a shout out. They, like I said, they initiated this. This is something that they applied to participate in, and they were only accepting, this is the second year, they were only accepting ten libraries, and they were successful in getting us approved. So I'm gonna turn it over to Selena. You did, I think she knows.
Hey. Sorry, I started sharing it a bit early. Yeah, so me, Allison, and Sarah are the CREE Team. So it stands for cultivating race equity and inclusion. We're doing this with libraries throughout California, and yeah, I'll be talking about it today. Oops, okay. So it is a one-year grant with the California State Library. It includes three full-day trainings held between March and August. So we just did our first session a few months ago, and our next one is June eighth. So we do three full days on Zoom. It is very comprehensive, and we'll be doing another session in August. And we'll see if that one will be in person. The third part of this is we're creating a growing network of over twenty-five libraries participating throughout California, committed to racial equity and inclusion for all. So we have twenty-five libraries participating with us this year, and then there are a couple who participated last year who didn't go on to the second year. These are the people coordinating the program. So we have from Khalifa, Veronda Pitchford. So Khalifa is the largest library network in the state, connecting over two hundred and thirty California libraries and providing us with a variety of resources, including continued education for staff and eBooks. Veronda Pitchford is their Assistant Director and one of the leads of the program. We also have Gordon and Sarah from GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, leading the training. We got to know them during our first session back in March, and I'll have some more info about GARE on the next slide. And then we have Patty Wong and Chantel Walker from the Santa Monica Public Library and Marin County Free Library. Besides CREI, the two of them have worked with the State Library and State Library Association on the color of leadership for the Developing Leaders Program. And Patty is the American Library Association's president-elect, and she's going to be the first Asian-American president of the ALA. So we are really excited to be working with them. So our March training, as I said, took place virtually over the course of three full days at the end of March. We spent time meeting other participants in our cohort, working collaboratively to discuss topics, including problematic policies at our libraries, going over our assignments, which I'll share with you later, and learning about the GARE approach. So the graphic on the side here is from GARE, and it describes their.
Go ahead.
What was that, trustee?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. So using GARE's words, their intent is to create change by, starting by visualizing a more just society. And then they go on to normalize the concepts of racial equity and our ability to talk about them, and then organizing staff and leadership to take action, and then operationalizing these values into concrete policies and practice. Here are all of the libraries participating this year. So I've separated them into NorCal and SoCal libraries, or NorCal and Central and SoCal libraries, so that you get an idea of who we're working with. Look good. I'm gonna move on. See, so the program objectives we have here are to support diversity and inclusion in a library workplace that grows diverse and sustainable leadership at the highest levels of each library organization. Teach participants the role of government and libraries in relation to racial equity, and build and strengthen staff skills to apply a racial equity framework to library service, both internal and external. To give you guys an example, I pulled Redwood City and their work plan because they were part of last year's group. They're local, and I believe their plan can give us examples to work off of. So it involves policy review, which I'll go into more detail for on the next slide. They also trained their staff. They created more equity-based programs and a plan to recruit and retain staff members of color and adjusting their marketing plan to be equity-based. So I've only taken the main bullet points for each of these, but for their full work plan, they're all about half a page of bullet points. So more on Redwood City, just to go deeper into their policy portion. I also pulled the header from their website because I thought it was cute. But the policies that they reviewed, and I kind of narrowed these down because we don't have all of these policies in place here in Daily City. But behavior policy, borrowing, confidentiality, display, internet access, material selection, and meeting rooms. They also explored alternatives to calling the police for behavior issues, utilizing resources and information from GARE, keeping connected with the other libraries and PLS and California libraries engaged in racial equity work, and developing a toolkit to ensure that racial equity is a key consideration in strategic planning, budget, and policy development. So next up is what our current projects are as a team. So we have our racial equity timeline, which all of our librarians signed on to help us with, and we've been working as a team to gather and organize a timeline of racial equity-related events, including local points like Westlake's history of being a Caucasian-only neighborhood, and our former mayor Mike Ngona becoming the first Filipino-American public official in California. We are also creating a racial equity case and vision statement, which explains the need for racial equity in our community, examples of what we as a team and library will commit to for our goals, and what we envision will result from our work. If y'all are interested, Redwood City and a couple of the libraries that did this before have some really solid examples of these. So if anyone's interested in those, please let me know. Lastly, our long-term goals are to build skills and expertise to promote inclusion and racial equity through library programming and services, implement community needs assessment, and engage community stakeholders in building equity, drafting an action plan to promote racial equity and inclusion with a focus on library policies. So these might include fines and fees, our behavior policy, or material selection. And yeah, that's my presentation. Let me know if you have any questions, and we really look forward to working with you as we move forward with this.
Thank, thank you so much for that beautiful presentation, and I was wondering if, if we, if I can get a copy of your presentation, of your slides, so I can, I like to look at it and make notes of it. But just appreciate all the hard work that you do for Daily City. Thank you so much. My fellow trustees.
Yeah, yeah, big props to you all, Selena, and the team. I think, I'm even just thinking about the work that's, that's been done from when we, when you all came up with that statement last summer, and then seeing a lot of the things really be put into practice is super exciting to me. I'm also super excited to see the, the folks that you all are consulting with. I know I've had some experiences. I've seen GARE and some of the other kind of spaces that I'm in for my paid work, and, and they do a lot of great work. I think not just in terms of like awareness and education, but I think in terms of thinking about how to meaningfully shift practices and structures, which I'm really excited to see what comes to fruition in Daily City Libraries. So thank you all for the work that you're doing.
Yeah, just to echo that, I appreciate this presentation, and I'm looking forward to, I think especially like the youth being able to see how community spaces like libraries are really focusing on like racial equity, especially like during, during this time when a lot of Black and Brown folks in our communities are getting killed. And so I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate that things are going into practice, and, and I also appreciate the opportunity for, for young people to see the work that we're doing so that they can be able to get inspired to also take action in their communities.
Yeah, I think something I'm also curious about, because I'm, I'm always inspired by how you all go deeper in the library you work. But I'm also curious in terms of the consultants or like the trainers that you all are talking to. I know that the, the city is also like thinking about having trainings and stuff. Are you all kind of connecting some of the consultants you're working with, with the larger Daily City staff, to kind of like expand some of the, the racial equity work that you all are doing, not just in the libraries, but in other departments? Just like curiosity. Think that could just be like an opportunity, just want to put it out. And I think it would be great to see this work expand in Daily City.
Yeah, the, the conveners of, of this, the CREE Institute, really, yeah, they've, they've, well, this is their second year, and, and they really know what they're doing. They've put together these, as Selena said, really intensive trainings for library staff around all of California, and definitely could potentially be a great resource.
Okay, I, I, I was just when Christine was sharing something, Justine was sharing something. I was wondering if we can tag along some of the inputs from our school districts, our local school districts, you know, around the community, and to maybe collaborate with the educators on the, for equity, you know? That we're, we're covering all the pieces, and maybe we, it's sort of uniform, and it's, it's also saying that we're, we're spreading the same message. So that was just my little tiny thought that came up, but thank you so much, Selena. Okay. Now moving to director's report.
Don't think we had anything, but I did include the, the requested survey from the last meeting, which I know that the board had asked. And I have a draft. Finalize it.
It's not linked in that agenda you sent, right, Tella?
No, it's not, but I'm gonna screen share it one moment, sorry about that. There it is. So it's, it's just in a Word document right now, but we have, we do have Survey Monkey, so we'll, we'll put it into Survey Monkeys to make it easier to share online. But I thought if you wanted to provide input on the questions, these are the questions that, that trustee Santos has suggested thus far, but I know that you had wanted to kind of workshop it in this meeting.
Okay, so.
Oh, sorry. Just one more thing to add, there's a sample of the, the social media post, so that we could, once we're finalized, we can, we can send it out and share it across all of our networks, yeah. So I'm sorry, let me scroll up. So these are the, these are the questions that were suggested by trustee Santos. Do it. Does anyone have anything to add or modify?
I really liked the social media post. I can't wait to post it.
That, that was a Selena original. That's our beautiful Ceremony Main Library behind there.
I like it. It's all, it's, it's very simple. It's only four questions. It's, you know, oftentimes I'm overwhelmed with questions in the survey and I lose interest, but this is very direct, and we just need to know the basics, so I, I thank you for the, the questions. Thank you. Juste Santos and. So do we need to to approve it? Or do we vote on it? Okay, so I can make a motion to approve the community survey of questions that we have via, on our website, and also in front of us.
I motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, trustees' report. So the trustees' report that I have in front of me, it's the, we have the survey, that one, and then collaborating with other boards and commissions. So that was, that was in the process, but I'm not sure where we at right now with Jayla. Did you have anything to report on that part? I mean, are we supposed to reach out to them? Is that something that we recognize, or is that something that, that is organized from internal?
I think Steph is looking for a direction from the board on what, specifically what you'd like to collaborate on. We have not done any outreach to other boards and commissions yet. So if you have any ideas or direction, or if you want to continue thinking about it over time, we're happy to make those connections. But we kind of need a starting place with an idea or a goal.
Okay. So, well, one goal that I need, I feel that we need to fix on our end is to have a full house before we even collaborate with other boards. And even though there's only, there's three of us, which is, you know, legally, it's a, it's a form, but I would like for other two seats to be, to filled before we make that next step. But I will leave it up to the other, my fellow trustees, and see what they, they have in mind.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, Teresa. I'm wondering if we can table that for a little bit later, because I think there's like a few things coming up for me around that too, is besides like having empty seats, also just like thinking about, you know, like, like we all have to be like all present to be able to move the trustee conversations. And so I would want to prioritize us also to fill the seats and then think about what other big projects.
Thank you.
I agree with that too. I think in the future, it's kind of hard to think of what to collaborate on, but I definitely think, you know, it's, it's good to collaborate with other boards and commissions, but I think we also have to take it into consideration, like, you know, when we'll be returning in person next year, and so, yeah, I think we, we need to fill in the rest of the seats and then see what we can collaborate when the time comes, like when, when we're able to like get in person or do something virtually, so, yeah.
Okay, so there you go. You have our, our report from, from all of us who are present now. That moving forward, I think what we need to work on first is to advocate for more seats, for our seats to be filled, and then putting out the word there for libraries before we, before we make that next to move. So we're just gonna table that at this. Meanwhile, we need to look for more candidates to fill our seats. Okay, and then the fourth one is report from Daily City Public Library Associates, DCPLA.
Hi, thank you. Nice to see everybody. I don't have a lot to report, mainly right now, the big thing is that we're doing our May membership drive. So we're, we're trying to get everybody to just renew in every May, just so that we're not trying to keep track of, you know, dribs and drabs of memberships coming in. So we're getting ready to send out a big snail mail and also email campaign. So I hope I can count on all of you to renew your memberships. I know Justine already does a recurring donation, which is an easy way to do it, then you never have to remember. But yeah, you should be getting something in the mail, or you can always renew online. So I will hope to have you all as members in our new year.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for always advocating for the libraries, and you not only wear that hat, but you're everywhere. You know, you're part of the community wearing so many hats, so I salute you, and I, I thank you for all the hard work. Okay.
On that, on that spirit, Teresa, I want to bring back something that you offered to us when DCPLA was looking for endorsements. You gave us an assignment for all of us to try to get one to two. I feel like we can challenge ourselves to try to get a new member to donate to DCPLA. I'm wondering if you all would be down for us trustees to challenge ourselves to try to get one member to sign up, I mean, one person in our networks to sign up for DCPLA membership.
Okay, I'm up for it.
Yeah, I'm down for that too.
I always like to take risks and challenges, you know, this life, you know, it's always about taking that step.
And let's do it. Thank y'all for what you do.
Three months to tears.
One thing we've talked about with our board is, you know, we, we challenged them at one point, you know, either recruit someone, and if you don't, then you can always gift a membership too. I mean, our lowest level membership is only twenty dollars, so it's, it's not that hard of a gift to give, and then maybe they'll continue on with their membership.
Right, okay. Well, thank you so much. Okay, moving to announcements and communications. Do we have any announcements?
So I do have one announcement, and it's a follow-up on getting more appointments to this board. What the library division can do is to help promote the application. It's an easy application online. We can do that on social media. Please repost or send to anyone that you. send to anyone that you might know and encourage them to apply so that the city council can review the applicants and make those remaining two appointments. So we will get that to you as soon as possible. In terms of ongoing meetings, I I think Vice President Fapua, it would be expected that either you run the meeting or another designee on the board. And I would suggest we wait to reorganize the board with president vice president selection until it's fully appointed. I think that just makes a little more sense and hopefully we can get moving on those appointments soon.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Okay, anybody else? Any announcements and communications? Okay. I like to make a special announcement for Sarah. You know, she has shown up to one of our sites here in 87, twice to read books for our children there and for Peninsula Family Services. So on behalf of Peninsula Family Services, thank you so much for the hard work and continuing showing the extra mile that you walk in your shoes and bringing literacy to the young ones, not just within the libraries, the corners of the libraries, but outside of the library. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I love what I do.
So agenda building for next meeting. So I want to say we keep on having conversation about collaborating with the board members, other board members will work. We will sit down and see what some of the struck out topics that we'd like to to happen in those conversation. Also, revisiting our survey to see what the collective what's the results on this survey. And then I say, checking in on ourselves on the, for recruiting anybody for DCPLA.
Yeah, can I, can I add one thing to that, Teresa? I think this came up a few times too. I know we've had some conversations about revisiting some policies. So I'm curious if we want to spend some time on that. I saw a few that the library staff really want to look at. So maybe those can be some starting points. I saw like I forgot the three that were like listed on there are some of the ones that you all are looking at, but I think maybe we can just, yeah, I wonder if those might be some things that we can weigh in on as well. And feedback, yeah.
I'm hoping we'll we'll have some more solid information to provide, well, Sarah will, on some of our summer programming. It's it's a summer like no other, but there's there's gonna be some really interesting opportunities, I think, to do things a little bit different. And so I think we'll have information to share about about what we're gonna be doing over the summer for for the summer, what summer learning will look like.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely put that one on Santos on that one too. Stephen, Mr. Stone, I have a quick question. Just curiosity, what's the timeline of filling up these seats? Do we have a any idea or how do we go about filling these seats? Because the other seat before our late president left, it it has been emptied, you know, for quite some time now. So I'm just wondering, you know, are there any protocols within the city with the council or how do we go about in doing so?
The best way to get those seats filled is to have people fill out the application to join the board. That really starts the process where we forward that application to the city council, they can review, and then they can make an appointment at one of the public city council meetings. There is no policy or procedure that has a specific timeline for filling seats. It really is dependent on that application process. So that that's our, that's the best course forward is to promote that opportunity and and hopefully through your own networks too. And we can go from there. There are open seats on other missions as well, so this does come up from time to time. So.
Is that something that during city council meetings, is that something that maybe the council can sort of like gently put out there as a, you know, as one of their reports? Like put out there at that time, say, hey, we're looking for, we have these seats available, you know, you know, come and join us and something like that, like the way to promote it. Is that doable? Is that necessary?
That is, that is definitely doable and it's it's feedback I can pass on to the city council.
Thank you so much. Okay. Well, I guess that's that's it. Any public comment?
Not via email. Anyone else?
Nothing? Okay. Well, I thank everybody for coming in today. Whatever hat you wear in sitting in this via Zoom, I appreciate the time you spend with us and even though there's a few of us in numbers, but the work continues to go, or like the saying goes, the show must go on. So thank you so much for your time and have a good evening and continue to stay safe. Thank you. Bye, everyone.
So much, y'all.
Take care.